You're in a go position. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Sodex City Council workshop slash special meeting for July 7th, 2021 with a clerk, please call a roll.
Yes, and please make sure to state your location, city, county, and state. Council member Leo.
Here. Here Sagatuck, Alleghen County, Michigan.
Stanton.
Here Sagatuck, Alleghen County, Michigan.
Becken. Uh oh. I think we lost him. We'll continue. Truster?
Here Sagatuck, Alleghen County, Michigan.
Peterson?
Here Sagatuck, Alleghen County, Michigan.
Lewis?
Here Sagatuck, Allen County, Michigan.
And Dean?
Here Sagatuck, Alleghen County, Michigan.
All right, so. Yep.
You want me to go ahead? Poor guy.
Yes, please.
All right, very good.
I'm sure he'll be back shortly.
I'm not the mayor, so I'm not going to make any mayor's comments, city manager comments.
So I'll have a city manager's report for Monday's packet. Just briefly, I was here for the Fourth of July festivities. I can say the feedback on that was very positive. The events went off without any major incidents, and so it appeared that everyone was having a great time. But I'll have a detailed report for your Monday packet.
All right, very cool. Any questions for the city manager while we're at this point in the agenda? Nope. All right, very good. Any changes to the agenda? No? All right. I don't think we have any guest speakers, so we'll just move on to public comment. This is the point in the meeting when guests who are here are free to speak. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Please introduce yourself and state your city of residence. With that, do we have any public comment on agenda items only? See anybody there, Pedley?
Pedley, you're muted.
She's muted, yeah.
Sorry, I see no raised hands at this time.
All right.
Mark is joining us again.
Oh, very good.
Oh, you're muted, Mark. Oh, you're still muted, Mark. I'll take this time to just make an announcement on our closed session, just for our audience members. When we get to that item, which is number 10 on the agenda, you'll be placed in a waiting room. And then after the closed session, the closed session, you'll be let back in for the second round of public comment.
Very good. There's our mayor connecting. All right.
Looks like mayor's on.
Yeah, you're still muted, Mark.
Bottom left of, there you go.
How's that?
All right. Welcome back.
We've got.
Torture, torture, this is what it is. Torture.
Mayor, we got you all the way through public comments, so we're at number eight.
Good job, and I'm here, by the way, calling from Douglas, Michigan, Alleghen County. Maybe that's the problem. Douglas. Okay, carry on wherever we were at. Please.
So unfinished business.
Item A. And just for council, this is a special meeting. I did talk to Mayor Becken earlier today. I think that it's his preference to actually take action on these agenda items on Monday, or else we're not going to have much to do on Monday. So he wants to, he wants to keep them on the agenda for Monday, so I'll just touch on them and answer any questions, and you can take action on Monday. So for this first item is an administrative item for the non-motorized trail in the Blue Star Group. In the resolution that was adopted by the tri-community, there was a deadline, kind of a soft deadline, for reporting back to the municipalities of June 1st, 2021. The committee is not going to hit that deadline. My request is just to remove that deadline. You know, they're tracking really well, they're working with an engineer, they have a self-imposed deadline. So it's a really kind of fine point in a formality, but just to keep it clean, I thought we would just, I'd recommend that we just eliminate that date from the resolution. So that's that. Any questions on that item? Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Got it, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so if no questions, we'll move on to item nine. A, Ryan?
Right, this is a resolution for a street ad under Act 51, which requires that the city or village furnish all the additional improved streets so that we can get some money from the state of Michigan for maintenance purposes. So Frederick Street was improved a while back, and it has not been added to the map. And so we have a resolution prepared to add Frederick Street. And we did update the agenda, thank you, Pedley, to include a map of where Frederick Street is, just in case you don't know. It's off of Vine Street, so if you can scroll down there for us, Pedley. Yeah, so off of Park Street, off of Vine Street, we have Frederick Street. And so we have some associated construction drawings for Frederick Street. And again, we just need to add this information to the Act 51 log for the state of Michigan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
Thank you. I may not have the street right. Did we also include, or can we include Mill Street? I know we improved that with, I'm not sure exactly when. But has that been included before? As you go down Butler, then there's that little street across Lucy, and a little dog leg off there, and we put the Millings on top of it.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
Yeah, with Mill Street, I'll check into that, Chris. That could be considered and likely as still a rural road, given that it's not asphalt surface and doesn't have any stormwater improvements. I'll check in with John on that, but it's a good question. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No.
Okay, if none, item B, 9B, please.
9B is a resolution for the designation of street administrator, something that I've always wanted to become. So also with Act 51, you have to designate an official street administrator. With Kirk being here for 14 years, you haven't had to do this in a long time. And so this is just a resolution to appoint me as the street administrator.
Questions from council? No additional compensation is being considered at this time. Okay, moving on to 9C, if no questions.
All right, 9C, we have the Mount Bald Head radar facility and fence and roof. Mr. Dean is on the call, he can help me out with this one. But the Mount Bald and Russ, I saw Russ on the call as well. The Mount Bald Head Working Group has been kind enough to solicit proposals for repair of the Mount Bald Head Facility Fence and additionally the roof. The recommended vendor has an existing relationship with the city. The repair of the roof, the fence and the roof will mitigate a hazard and assist in protecting the radar facility. And two options were presented as far as the fence repairs go. The working group is recommending the first option, which is the $3,239.56 proposal. And with the roofing, you can see there's some repair with some liquid tar, roll roofing as well. I know Mr. Dean had sent some aerial photos. Pedley, I don't know if you're in a position to pull those up or not. If not, I don't think it's a big deal. And I would, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I would see if Mr. Dean has any.
Absolutely, yeah, I was going to ask Scott to comment, so Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ryan. Yeah, the team is, the work group led by Russ Gardner, who's on the line as well. We've met weekly since the creation of the work group. They've made excellent progress. And what they focused on for the short term is to protect the public from the safety hazard that the radar station represents. The fence is in bad shape, it's not a fence really anymore. And so they've got the fence quote to shore up the fence where it's been compromised. And they've got a very low-cost solution to repairing the roof to stop further damage and erosion into the building, once again, to keep it secure. Mr. Talzner from TNT believes he can actually do it for probably half of that bid if he can coordinate with Scott at DPW just to get the liquid tar, the five-gallon buckets up to the top of Mount Bald Head. And I just, as you see in the picture, thank you for that, it's a great one to start with. The corners of the radar station are where the largest leaks are, so they just proposed pouring liquid tar and using some rubber kind of impermeable membrane over those former ventilation hoods and areas where there are some other, thank you. Yeah, you can see at the top of one of those hoods, you can see a giant hole by some red spray paint, which there's quite a bit up there as well, because people can get into the site and vandalize it and risk their lives doing so, frankly. Okay, moving on to this picture, thank you, Pedley. This shows you the condition of the fence. I don't think currently, I think what we would all agree, this is what we want visitors to Sagatuck to see when they climb Mount Bald Head. So we're going to try to fix that fence in a very cost-effective manner. We had the Alleghen County debts crew up, thank you to Scott Herbert. They cleared a lot of the brush, that brush pile there is waiting to be collected and brought down, disposed of with the other yard waste that we typically collect. And what am I missing here? I would recommend letting them move forward with these two items to secure the property, and if it's possible for them to just have TNT and the fencing consultants simply send the invoices into the city staff for processing. I think that would be the most expedient way to handle this. And I'm quite confident based on this team, I mean, you've got basically, and I'm not counting myself in this equation, but you've basically got the dream team that worked on the root beer barrel, that worked on the fish shanty, that put the star up on Mount Bald Head. So these are guys that know the site really well. You got the history center people involved. They know how to raise funds, they know how to engage the public. And if you help them just with this little piece to get things secure and give them some time to really take a deep dive and evaluate the site and what the opportunities or what the considerations are for the city going forward, I think we can take this off the city's plate for quite some time if we just get this security and safety piece taken care of in the short term. Russ is on the line, I'll let Russ fill in any blanks that I may have neglected to mention.
Thanks, Russ Gardner, city of Sagatuck. Is it okay if I speak, Mayor?
Here, go ahead, you bet.
Yeah, thanks. No, Scott covered it quite well in those pictures that he, pardon me, that Pedley was able to show, where we sent, we had a drone that did a study of the entire site. So we'll have additional information to share regarding what we found up there, but those were the most representative pictures of the two areas that we want to focus on to secure the site, make it safe, well, keep the public away from the building and the structure as best we can, as well as just make it more secure, make sure it's not further deteriorated by the elements on the roof. And also Art Talzma, many of you know Art, he's also the town prior TNT Roofing. He's done a lot of work in the community. He's also one that did the root beer barrel roof. So he's had prior contact with the city as well-known contractor, well-trusted contractor in town, so.
All right, thanks. Council, any questions now? I think we'll revisit this Monday evening. If I just may interject, the reason why I feel we should act on these Monday, we're going to, and I likely would have more people participating at our regular council meetings. And I just feel it's, especially on something like this, this particular item will get a lot of, I think, public interest. And so I appreciate the comments from Scott and Russ, and any further questions from council?
Yeah, Mayor, this is, this is Garn, just for Scott and Russ, I'm just curious of the timeline then of getting these repairs done.
I can't answer that. Garn, I think sooner rather than later, though, in terms of getting the green light into fence consultants and TNT so they can schedule this. There is also a bit of a coordination matter with the DPW team. We can reduce the cost particularly of the roof repairs dramatically if we can coordinate with Scott's team during the week to have them take some tar up, take debris down. And then there's another piece between now and Labor Day. There's a pretty significant safety hazard to runners for the Mount Bald Head Challenge with the erosion of the sand exposing some metal pipes and some metal stakes that people don't easily see when they come up the stairs and off the deck. So that will help as well, and that's going to be beneficial to the Mount Bald Head Challenge folks as well. So if there's a bit of coordination between the contractors and the vendors, so once again, getting things scheduled early, I think will be to our benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Other council questions? All right, moving on to.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is kind of a joint project here, and I know that when we do bids or getting constructs or anything like that, the city has a lot of hoops to jump through. Were they all jumped through for this? So we're okay with choosing a consultant?
I'll let Ryan answer that, but I believe the cost of these two items would be below the threshold of needing to put it out to a competitive bid, but I could have that wrong.
That's correct, Mr. Dean. I believe that the threshold is $5,000, and both of these quotes are under that amount.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council?
No, Mayor, it's all.
Yes, Tyler.
I would just like to thank the committee for tackling this, in particular the fence, because it's just such a public safety issue and a bad look. So I'm really thankful that this is the first phase that you're working with us, so thank you.
All right. Anyone else, council? If none, we'll move on to item 9D. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our information technology agreement with Shoreline Technology. And the only change from previous year is that we have made some improvements to both email backup retention for all employees and improved security measures. And I think we've added a computer, but in talking with Peter, the costs are, compared to last year, are very similar.
Questions from council?
Mayor, this is Garn. Just Ryan, out of curiosity, does this include some help with getting City Hall up to snuff so that we can kind of do a hybrid meeting from up there, or is that a whole different entity?
It's a whole different group, yeah, they don't provide that service. They provided some names, but we're making some progress on that. I know that's going to be coming up as time moves on here. I know we're eager to get back to in-person and have that capability, so I think we're making some progress here.
Yeah, hope to have an update on that from Pedley and Ryan at the Monday meeting. So that's on the, that's at the in-person meetings, so. Is that Holly?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Ryan, do you know if we'll be moving to Office 365 government?
I don't know. I don't know, but can certainly inquire.
Yeah, that particular product is designed for governments, for municipalities, because it has the data backup that is subject to, you know, government regs and requirements. So I think that that may be what we should be looking at because we won't have the problems that we had before in terms of backups and what we're required to keep as a city, so if you could find out.
Yeah, I'll certainly inquire. Thank you.
Excuse me, any other questions from council? Okay, we'll move on to next agenda item, which is really the rationale why we went to a special meeting today. So we could go into executive session regarding a confidential matter. To do so, we'll need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we go into closed session.
Can you cite the motion, please, that shows up on the agenda?
I don't see it right now.
Maybe Pedley can get up there, scan upwards. Just down a bit.
It's under number 10.
Yes, item 10, there you go.
Yes, I move that pursuant to Open Meeting Act 15.268, hypothesis or parentheses 8H, to consider material exempt from the discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Peterson, seconded by Louis, to go into closed session. Matter of procedure, do we not have to go, have a motion to go out of open session first?
No, we don't.
No? Okay, all right, thank you. So if there's no further questions, clerk, please call a roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, yes. So for those who are attendant, are in attendance, they will be put into the waiting room.
Give me just a minute to do that.
Yeah, why don't you explain how that'll work, because we'll reopen the meeting and then re-invite people back who are in the waiting room pending the closure of the meeting. And any other outstanding items that we'll have to consider.
It'll take me a second to go through and put each person in the waiting room, but when we're done, I will admit all of them at one time back into the meeting.
All right, thank you.
This is where you need the Jeopardy theme music. That looks like that would be everybody.
Oh, Pedley, it says we're recording live on YouTube.
Oh, I should probably pause that, shouldn't I?
Prior to a meeting to approve them, so anyways, let us know when you get everybody back in this session, or back out of the waiting room.
Sean, he looks awake.
All right, everybody should be here.
Okay, I believe we need a motion to go back into open session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go back into open session?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Peterson, seconded by Dean to go back into open session. Clerk, please call a roll.
Hope you're muted.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Okay, council goes back into open session at 4:52 PM. As a follow-up to our discussion in the closed session, is there a motion to be made?
Yes, Mayor.
Next steps, yes.
Yes, I'd like to move to authorize city staff to hire interim legal counsel to assist with all legal business.
Second?
Second.
Was that by Truster? Ken? Okay, so a motion by Louis, seconded by Truster regarding authorizing staff to take the steps necessary to hire interim legal counsel. Any questions or comments regarding that motion? If none, clerk, please call a roll.
Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
A motion passes unanimously. Moving on to a second opportunity for the public to address council. This point of the meeting, they can address council on any issue they've seen fit or deemed fit. Please ask, if you wish to address council, please ask to be recognized. Identify your name and community of residence and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody who wish to address council at this time?
Yes, me, please.
Yes, Mr. Steel.
Well, thank you for giving me the time.
Yes, Jane Underwood?
Up. Jane, you're in second.
Yes.
You're on deck.
I'm on deck?
Yeah, you're second. Sean Steele was.
Okay.
Okay, we'll be right with you.
Thank you, I just wanted to let you guys know that we've had some comments placed on the Sagatuck Chain Ferry website about why the chain ferry has been closing. And I thought it was worth me letting you guys know that we've had some issues with the current and the wind this year, which has forced us to close a few times this summer. At any given time, when we find it's a safety issue, we will always close it for the public safety. We do try to communicate to everybody who does comment on the website, as well as communicate on both sides of the chain ferry of whether or not we're open or not. But I did want to just let you guys know that we're on top of it, we're aware of it, and we're doing all we can to keep it open as much as possible throughout the given season, because it is such a short season.
Okay, thanks, Sean. He doesn't get to join us very often, so council, have any questions regarding the chain ferry operation?
Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
Not so much of a question as just to, a big thanks, because I feel very secure with them handling the chain ferry, and I think we're just real lucky that it turned out this way.
But thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I would totally agree that it's all about safety. Last thing in the world we want is for anyone to get injured or have the chain break or whatever happens in strong current and wind. So far as job well done, Sean, thanks.
But thank you. I know the eight inches of rain we got last week caused many challenges. One of them was the marker buoy that let free in the channel and got stuck on the chain. And I did my inspection in the morning to start the day, the chain was so tight that I was afraid it was going to snap. So I got a hold of the Coast Guard as well as Chief Janik. Chief Janik pulled the buoy away, but then we had the challenge of taking all the seaweed off of the chain across the channel, which we still have an issue with a lot of stuff coming down. But the hardest part is when we get that much rain and that wind coming straight out of the south, it's really, really tough on the guys to go across there. So we always give it a valid effort, and if we feel that it's too dangerous or possibly too dangerous, we just have to have to do it safe. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we think of it every day, and we're honored to do it, and we just always keep the safety on the top priority, no matter what.
Thanks a lot, Sean.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jane, are you out there?
Yes, I'm here, I think. Am I?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, chain ferry, yes, that's a topic. I've been on it when the chain broke and we went sailing away. Okay, chain ferry, yes, that's a topic. I've been on it when the chain broke and we went sailing away. It happens, and it's a tough job running that chain ferry. But I'm also concerned about the safety of the people getting off the ferry here on the west side. It's could we please put a sign up warning people that there is very heavy traffic on Park Street? And to be very, very careful. What about a walkway there? People are going to Mount Bald Head. They're going down to the museum. They're walking up to Oval Beach. They're wandering. Unfortunately, many people are on vacation. They're not paying attention. And what's going on with the fence? That seems to be causing most of the problems. Is the ZBA going to be able to make any determination next week? I heard that you have an internal council. What about council for the ZBA? This is something that really worries me. I live way too close, and when I hear a siren, I get very worried. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments, Jane. Is there anyone else in our audience who wishes to address council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As we let the passengers onboard off the vessel, we could mention to them that you know, the west side does have heavy traffic. And I don't know how many people listen to us when we're all ready to go off the vessel, but we can, you know, things like, and the people who make comments on the web, it at least makes us aware that people have concerns and it allows us to have a discussion with the team to make sure we can keep moving forward. So that simple comment tonight allows us to talk about it and make sure we do everything we can.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, Sean. I know your guys opened the gate, so to speak, to let them off the ferry there, and that might just be a good opportunity for them to to mention to them to be careful as they approach Park Street. And I think, I think we can look at additional safety features at the street itself, so thank you. Anyone else out there?
One of the things.
Oh, go ahead.
We can probably talk to Scott about maybe putting something at the end by the street, whether it's an orange cone or just to acknowledge that the sidewalk ends at that point.
Sure, sure.
And we. Working process.
Right, we've got some crosswalk. Crosswalk signs too, that I hope we have a few of those left over, so. Good comments to have, and I'm sure Ryan is vigorously writing down notes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again. Anyone else in our audience wish to address council? You see any, anyone out there, Padley? Okay, I'll take that as.
Sorry, I was trying, sorry, I was trying to move myself, and look, I don't see any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. We have no communications to share this afternoon. Opportunity for council comments before adjournment? Anyone council wish to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is real. Mark, I just agree that maybe a crosswalk sign by the chain ferry would be a really good idea. Just driving boats by in between Casaloma and the chain ferry. I have no idea why people drive that fast in that stretch, but they do. It's crazy how fast they drive between Casaloma and the chain ferry. And I think an easy solution would be to put out one of those crosswalk signs just to slow traffic. That's all.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Other council comments? Okay, Mayor comment, we had some preliminary discussions with staff regarding in-person meetings. Obviously, we're not prepared to go into a in-person meeting for this Monday's meeting. I think a plan is to have our next workshop meeting in person and also try the hybrid option that we can at least put together at this point in time. So that's kind of the game plan that we would be looking at at the next workshop meeting. If it works out good, we can have an open, we can have in-person meeting, the second meeting of July. If it doesn't, well, we'll just move it on down the road to another time. Any other council comments? Okay, if none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Peterson seconded by Lewis to adjourn the meeting at 5:02 PM. Clerk, please call a roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Beckin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon and evening.
All right, take care.
So, Mayor, I did take some minutes while we were in closed session. And I just, so what do you normally do with those? Because I just to know what you would like me to do with them. So I normally will sign them and seal them and keep them for a year. Do you want council to read them?
Yeah, we have to approve them, I think, is the proper procedure. You can chat with Ryan about it. I think we had a similar situation earlier in the year where we.
It's been a minute since I did these.
Yeah, I think actually, we approved, we called the meeting to order about 15 minutes or 10 minutes early and in kind of a, without before, allowing others to, and I don't know if that was legal, to be honest with you. Before we, we approved them, you know, in like, before the meeting, the next meeting. Now, if we had an attorney, we could bounce that off an attorney. But Cindy, we did something a while back regarding that, so maybe that just has to be looked at.
Yeah, maybe I can find something.
I mean, Aaron was still here, and I know it was.
Oh, okay.
It was a few months back.
All right.
If that's helpful.
Yep, I can, I can find that. Thank you so much.
All right, all right, thanks. How do I get out of here?